All right, good morning. We're going to call the meeting of the Carrington County Commission to order. Today is Tuesday, October 28th. It is 9:00 AM. And we'll begin with Pledge of Allegiance, and we'll have Randy.
Pledge of Allegiance. The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Randy.
Yes.
It's a reminder, please silence your cell phones so that we can not disrupt the meeting here this morning, and hopefully get to turn them back on. Call for public comment. Public comment may be submitted in person or by telephone by calling (605) 882-6248 or by calling (605) 882-6297. Commissioners, any conflict of interest ideas this morning?
No. No. No.
It should also be noted that Commissioner McElhaney is online, so we'll give him time to answer here this morning as well. Item number four is action to approve the October 28th agenda.
So moved.
Okay.
Moved by Schwer, second by Gable. Any discussion? Not in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
You that motion carries. Commissioner McElhaney, was that an aye in support or aye opposed?
Aye.
Okay, all right. Yeah, little delay there, so we just want to make sure. Okay, all right, so all in favor say aye if you did. Okay, motion carries, all right. Action to approve the October 21st minutes. So moved.
Okay.
Okay, motion by Johnson, second by McElhaney. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Presentation on Bridge Inspections by Mark Younger, Banner Associates. Mark.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Hi, Mark. Push the buttons and get your pad up. Introduce yourselves, then everybody will know who you are, the listening audience.
Mark Younger, Banner Associates.
Josh Olson, Banner Associates.
Sure, you can flip to the next one there, Lee.
So yeah, we just introduced ourselves. I'm Mark. I've had the privilege of working with the county for the past 22 years on the bridge system. And Josh here is new to Banner. He's worked for the DOT for 16 years and has helped the DOT out with their state bridge inspections and has been heavily involved in their bridge system. And the purpose to getting together today is to give you guys a summary, kind of a big picture overview of the 2025 bridge inspection work. I did meet with, Josh and I met with Randy this morning out at the highway shop. Randy's got all the reports and all the details of the inspections if you guys have more questions, and you're welcome to call me at any time, too. Next slide, Lee. Brief overview of the bridge inspection program. A bridge is anything with a waterway opening of 20 feet or more, and it does include culverts. And in general, it's a federal requirement that a bridge be inspected every two years. There's some exceptions to that, but in general, it's every two years. And the DOT does pick up 80% of the tab for Banner's work, and then the county pays the other 20%. And we're out there inspecting bridges for the safety of the traveling public. And myself, as a licensed engineer, I have an ethical responsibility to protect the Brief overview of your bridge system. Carrington County is the proud owner of 42 bridges. 12 of those bridges are in poor condition, which is about 29% of the system, and the remaining portion of your system is either in fair to good condition. 10 of those, 10 of your bridges currently have weight limit restrictions, which is about a little under a fourth of your system. Four of those are on county asphalt roads, one on county gravel, and then the remaining bridges with weight limit restrictions are on township roads. Your looking forward to your bridge replacement needs. Currently, we have approximately a dozen bridges that we've identified that'll need replacement in the next 10 years. Half of those are on county asphalt roads, one on a county gravel road, and then the remaining on township roads. And then in the decade beyond that, currently got another four bridges identified, all on township roads. That bottom item there, in your five-year plan, there's currently over $24 million in bridge work, and that equates to roughly $7.8 million local share, which would be Carrington County's cost. So the need is greater than the funding resources right now.
Can we negotiate that price?
There are some, prices are going down a little bit on construction right now, so that's a good trend. This next slide here shows a map of your 42 bridges in the county. It's color-coded. So the bridges in red are the ones in poor condition, and the ones that kind of have a yellow highlight on the, towards the bottom of the box, whether it be a red box or a blue box, those are your ones with weight limit restrictions. So that gives, you can, you can go through and see where your bridges in poor condition are on the map here. So during the rest of the slideshow here, we'll kind of be going through the 2025 recommendations. We'll be touching on some new load postings, adding a couple bridges to the five-year plan, going over some priority replacements and rehabs, priority repairs, priority riprap repairs, some maintenance the county highway department should be doing, and then just kind of a heads up on some bridges that'll likely receive future weight limit postings. So this bridge here had a weight limit posting last inspection cycle. We did reduce it farther. This bridge is on 162nd Street, which is a township road over the Big Sioux. If you flip to the next slide, Lee. The reason this bridge keeps getting a reduction in the weight limit capacity is it's got timber abutments, and the timber abutments are rotting. It's very, very typical for this style of bridge, so. The bridge is 52 years old. These bridges with timber abutments last around 50 years, and that's it. So we'll continue to monitor it and post it accordingly during the next bridge inspection This next bridge here is on County Highway 11, also known as Old Highway 81. This bridge was at legal loads. We do now recommend a load posting on this bridge. Click to the next slide, Lee. Due to the corrosion of the steel beams on the bridge, this bridge is 85 years old. And we'll continue to, continue to monitor it. You know, it is a...
Is that the one that's north of Highway 20?
This one is south of Highway 20. It's the sister bridge to the one north of Highway 20. The one, the one north of Highway 20 is, you guys received federal funding to replace that one. This one is south of Highway 20.
South of Highway 20.
Yep.
Mark, looking at this picture that you have here with the bridge, it doesn't look like that corrosion is through that beam. Put these cross, the picture on the left here with the full bridge. Is that, is that an accurate depiction of what we're looking at? Is that where this picture is taken from?
Yeah, the majority of the, majority of the corrosion is at the ends of the beams.
Okay.
And...
It's not through the beam, though?
It's not through the beam, but it's eating the steel away. There is section loss to the beams.
Now, this is, is this just north of County Road 6 and 11, the intersection?
If you look at your, if you want to flip it back to the map here.
I gotta get back to there.
Yep.
Well, I gotta go to the first page.
Is it between County Road 4?
Oh, County Road 4.
Yep.
Yeah, okay, yeah. I live out there, that's why I'm concerned whether I make it home or not.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep, you got it, right there. Slip to, go to slide 12? We do recommend adding a couple more bridges to your five-year plan. Both of these are on Highway 11, which is Old Highway 81. Both of these, both of these bridges are currently in fair condition, but both of them have timber abutments, and the timber abutments, like I said, last about 50 years, and that's all you get out of them. So one bridge is 46 years old, the other bridge is 43 years old, and they are showing early signs of rotting in the timber abutments. And it'd be good to get them in the five-year plan and start doing some planning to, to get these replaced, too. Consider these two very important because, I mean, that is a critical trucking route, especially from Con Ag, running trucks into Watertown. That's a big mining operation out there, and so there is a lot of truck traffic that uses these two bridges. It's more of a, it's more of a heads-up planning informational purposes at this point, so.
The scary part is I don't remember when they were replaced. It seemed like the other day.
If you want to go to slide 14. Next few slides here are priority replacement projects. This, this one is the 14th Avenue Northwest Bridge. Well, there's a crane and those are sitting out there already. This bridge is planned to come out here in then the next two to three weeks, I believe. So I believe the second week in November they plan on starting. It'll, it'll be great to get this bridge replaced. And the county, county has received federal funding to replace this bridge.
Mark, what's the timeframe on that? I had that question posed to me when the project starts.
Sure. They, there's a 275 calendar date count on the project, so if they, if they started now, you'd be looking at the end of July of 2026 or early August of 2026 to meet that 275 days. The overall deadline for the project's October 30th of 2026, but that calendar date starts as soon as they install traffic control, so. It's a nine-month, nine-month project, and we did, it's a little slower because we anticipated a contractor starting during the winter, so it'll, it'll be closed likely nine months.
So the next obvious question for me, I guess, and not being an engineer and I don't know anything about bridge building, but why does it take so long to build a bridge?
It doesn't typically take that long, but just because they're starting during the winter, just there's certain days where it's going to be cold enough where they can't work. It just, everything's slower in the winter to get equipment going. I mean, less daylight.
I'd be more concerned with spring runoff.
Yep.
That's could be...
Yes.
The one nice thing about winter construction is they should be able to get all their foundations in and all the riprap in the Big Sioux River before the spring flooding, hopefully, and so they should be able to get the project built up above, above flood stage if that does happen in the spring, so.
Thanks.
Yes.
I can just remember when they were putting the 212 bridge in, how long that took, and you know, it was a big, big project there as well, and I just, I know it takes time.
Next slide, Lee. This bridge is up on County Gravel Highway 2 over the Big Sioux River. This bridge is in, it's in serious condition, which is the category under poor condition. It currently has a weight limit of five tons on it. We're gonna submit a application on behalf of the county before Christmas here to apply for funding to replace this bridge. Hopefully, we can get funding. I would anticipate a future closure of this bridge in one of the next bridge inspection cycles if we can't get funding to replace it, so it's...
It's on Highway 2?
Yep.
Center of the...
It's also known as Cottonwood Street over the Big Sioux River. Next slide, Lee. This bridge is on Highway 11. This is the one just north of Highway 20. The county has received federal funding to replace this bridge. Hopefully, construction will happen in '26 or '27 on this one. Next slide. This is a repair project on Highway 7. County just recently awarded a contract to cram construction to fix this bridge. He plans on getting in there in the spring of 2026 to replace that beam that got damaged This next section of the presentation will go over just some priority repairs, just highlights of some things that should be fixed. This is a guard rail on the bridge on Highway 6 over the Big Sioux that needs to be repaired west of the casino. This is a bridge on Sioux Conifer Road over the Big Sioux River, and it's an example of a repair that County Highway Shop has done themselves. We made a recommendation to repair this corner of the abutment last bridge inspection cycle, and the county shop did that repair, so good job. We appreciate seeing stuff like that. I'll let Josh talk about this next one here.
So this guy's got a little bit of erosion on the northeast corner. It's starting to get close to the roadway. We're recommending that the wing wall be repaired or replaced and some riprap added just to protect your road. This is on the Big Sioux River. It is migrating to the east.
Next slide, Lee.
This guy is on County Road 3 on the southeast corner of town, or southeast corner of the county. I believe this was hit at one time, and it, it tore away from the posts and whatnot. We're just recommending that this be repaired to limit the county's liability going forward.
Next slide, Lee. This next section here is priority riprap repairs, and riprap is just big rock that you add under a bridge to help protect against erosion and scour. This, this is the bridge on Highway 6 over the Big Sioux River, west of the casino. We applied for funding to fix the erosion of underneath this bridge and did not get funding through the DOT, so the, the county went ahead and hired this work out themselves, and that was done in January of 2025. Another example of the county, County Highway Shop taking care of problems before they become really big problems, and so it's, you know, good job getting this fixed. It'll, it's going to help save your roadway during a future flood event, so. Next slide. This is a riprap repair that needs to be done. The riprap has settled, and we need to add additional rock underneath this bridge. This is on a township road just east of Watertown. Next slide.
This is on County Road 3, same kind of concept. It was repaired at one point. We're just recommending that riprap be added to this so the repair doesn't continue to undermine. The north side is not as bad, but since they're there, we're recommending that it all be done at the same time, so.
This next section here is just example of maintenance that the highway department should be doing on their bridges. This is again on Highway 6, west of the casino over the Big Sioux. You can kind of see that black area of the steel. That's area of rust that the county's repaired in the past. It's just the ongoing maintenance thing that needs to continue to be done and keep sand and dirt off those, those areas of steel, too, so.
This is just another bridge. It's kind of the before of the previous slide, just cleaning off the sand, debris, wash it out every year. This'll prevent long-term problems, well, it'll prevent little problems from becoming big problems. So it's just a routine fix that we're recommending for this, that county forces are, should be able to handle, so.
Next slide, Lee. Our next section here is just to give you a heads up on a few bridges that'll currently carry legal loads that will likely see a weight limit sign in the future. This bridge is on Highway 13, also known as Sioux Conifer Road over the Big Sioux River. Bridge is towards the end of its lifespan, and we have done a hydraulic study on this bridge. Next slide.
Bridge doesn't look like it's in that kind of shape from the picture.
Yeah, the, the top portion of the bridge was replaced in the 70s. The abutments are the issue on that bridge. Those are the original abutments from like the 1930s or 40s, so. These next two slides here, these are the two bridges we recommended getting in the five-year plan. They're the ones with timber abutments that are approaching the end of their lifespan and will likely see a future weight limit posting, so that's, they're both on Highway So we'll end on a good note here. The county did get one brand-new bridge this year. It's on Highway 20 over the Big Sioux River. It was completed in 2025. These are great bridges. They'll, they'll be in service long after we're all gone. It should, should last the county many years. One thing we went over with Randy this morning is the county needs to keep the deck sealed up. You know, that's just a routine maintenance item to keep salt from penetrating into the concrete and keep that bridge in great condition for a long time. Next slide. Current funding opportunities available for bridge replacement program. The only funding right now is the big program through the DOT, and that's a $15 million pot of money. Every year, in every single county in the state of South Dakota is competing for that $15 million. It's, it's not going very far anymore. You get one bridge down south can heat up $6 or $7 million, you know, a big 300 or 400-foot-long bridge over, you know, in the southeastern part of the county. So that's what's available. In, in past years, there has been federal funding available, and Carrington County's been fortunate to get that federal funding. That Highway 20 bridge got replaced with federal funding. The 14th Avenue Northwest Bridge is being replaced with federal funding, and then that one bridge up on Highway 11 is going to get replaced with federal funding. So you've got three projects through, through that funding. That funding was not available, available last year or this year. I don't know what the future is if we'll have more money available for bridges or not, but right, right now, it's just that state big program.
So the bridges along the interstate and stuff, is that, are those federal dollars that we're competing with DOT, huh?
No.
No?
They are funded through the DOT's construction program. They have no impact on what the county is receiving. The DOT, I think under law, they had to contribute 8 million to the big program, and they've contributed additional funds since then. That's where we get the 15. But like on the interstate, that, that has no impact on the, on the county side. I wish it was more sharing, but they ain't going to give up their money.
The question that I have, some of these guard rail, you know, they had to be hit. Do we, do we ever collect any insurance on any of these mishaps by whoever hit that bridge, or?
It was hit and run.
That's what I was wondering, if they were hit-and-run situations. They ran over with a tractor and just kept going. Also, we just got to figure out in the county how we can get better situated in the big program, and we don't, we have to do that. We need to continue working on that idea. Nobody likes to hear wheel taxi, but sometimes it has to happen. You have wheel taxi or you don't have any wheels at all.
And that's something Mark and I need to discuss, if you have information on that.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you for your business. We do appreciate it.
Thank you. We always appreciate your presence. Yeah.
And I also want to just thank Mark and his team. Mark was at a meeting earlier this week with Commissioner Schwer and I addressing some public concerns, and we know you do a lot for the county, Mark, you and your team. We appreciate it.
Sure.
So thank you. Okay, let's go ahead and move on to item number seven. This is a public hearing in action to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash sixteen, vacating a portion of right-of-way in the Poles subdivision.
Goodbye, me.
So we're going to, uh, look for a motion in a second to approve that. Motion by Johnson? Second by Gable?
Correct, yeah.
Luke?
Did you find those little documents?
Okay, so we've got a, uh, we've got a request here, a petition to vacate a right-of-way here in Poles subdivision. If you don't have your plats memorized for the county, I don't blame you. This is on the west side of Lake Pelican, uh, along County Road. We just had our quiz on county roads, but it is, uh, along that county road, uh, that is west of, of, uh, of Lake Pelican. Uh, the petitioners are Susan Brook, David Carlson, and the Benedicting Sisters of Mother of God Monastery. Why are they the ones that signed? Because they are, you're, you're about there now. There you go, yeah. Um, they're the ones that signed because they're the ones that own property that are abutting to and serve by that. So they are, uh, they're served by that and so that's why they signed. Uh, they own the properties that touch, that touch this, um, and that, we'll leave that one up there for right now. Yeah, yeah, let's leave that one up there for right now. Um, the subject right-of-way is not part of the county system, however Pelican Township has requested the county handle the vacation of the right-of-way in this case. They cite no objections to the request and that was as of about a year ago. I double-checked with them here right before we met, uh, last, that was two weeks ago, and, uh, they said that their position hasn't changed. I do want to make the point that generally speaking, the county, not generally, as a rule, uh, for the last, I don't know how long, as long as I've been doing this, the county does not take up vacations of township roads unless the township asks that the county take it up and cites that they either have no objections or they support it. And the main reason for that is that we have staff to do it. They don't, and so that's why we'll take it up for them. Uh, in that case, that's exactly what happened. Their only recommendation was that an access easement remain on that property in favor of, if, if you're able to view the, the document that's on the screen here, uh, you probably can't read the lot numbers, but, uh, Susan Brook owns lots four and thirteen, which are bisected by this access road, which is known as West Pelican Drive. Uh, Lot Three accesses that as well as Lot Two. Lot Two is more of an emergency secondary access on that, and so that's why they were to sign on it. The idea is to allow an easement to remain on that property, however, to replat this as one single lot where Lot Four and Thirteen are. Sorry, that's a lot of words, but basically, uh, the person who owns Four and Thirteen want one piece, not two pieces, and just an easement to promise to let people go through. The second aspect of this, and why would they want to do that? One, because there's a garage in the middle of the road. That's part of it. Uh, but primarily because the road's not actually there. Uh, if you are able to see on the, on the aerial image, you can see that for the most part, at least half of that stretch, the road is back towards onto Lot Thirteen. So if you go to the next slide, the intent here is, we'll go a little bit, let's go a little bit farther then. I guess I'm gonna have to go to one more. Do we have it? Let's go the other direction. Um, is there a plat up there? Okay. Okay, well then we'll leave it. Uh, yeah, go one more, um.
Oh, I see, okay. There's this and there's that one there.
Check one more up. Um, one, try that one one more time. Okay, so I guess we will, I'll just describe it then. So the, the plat will wind up dedicating an easement over exactly where the road is. So just moving it over to there. So bottom line, the request here is to vacate a right-of-way because, um, their intent is to combine the lots. Uh, the request is that it will serve the public interest, which is a point that we have to make in approving it. Um, so if approved, the reasoning for doing so would be that the right-of-way serves only as access to lots owned by the petitioners, resulting in a dead end into Lot Two of Poles addition. Uh, Pelican Township does not maintain the right-of-way, therefore it's privately maintained and access may be accommodated for each of the above-described properties or petitioners by dedicating the access easement, and the Pelican Township does not object to the request. But since they do not maintain the right-of-way, county commission, uh, they're requesting the county commission be the body to approve the vacation, subject to an access easement. And so if approved, uh, we have the condition that they have an access easement and it so happens that, uh, an intended purchaser of that property has prepared a plat that does exactly that for about five minutes from now.
Love to prove.
So we have a motion in a second. So at this time, we will open it up for public hearing. See if there's anybody here to speak on this issue. Is there anybody here to speak on this issue?
I will note for the sake of, of attendance, uh, that the, uh, individual, I'll, I'll call him applicant, he's been doing a good job doing a lot of the running for the better part of a year on this. Uh, Mr. Tyler Jensted is here, uh, to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you for being here. Any questions? Now go ahead and close the public hearing at this time. We have a motion in a second to approve this request. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Commissioner McLean, do you see online? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you.
Yep.
I don't know if we lost.
You're welcome.
Commissioner McLean here or not? Still lit up there.
Are you there, Luke? Are you there, uh? Tyler? Tyler, are you here?
I don't think so.
Is that all you have, Luke?
I got a plat too.
Which one is that?
Right, or do I?
Yep. Case number eight. So we'll go ahead and move to action to approve the plat resolution twenty twenty-five dash seventeen, Poles subdivision Lot Fifteen. And I'll move to approve that.
I'll second it.
Motion by Johnson, second by Schwer.
All right, you ready for me? All right, so, uh, we've got, we replaced the exhibits with, uh, the, the vacation ones, so I'll describe this a little bit. So basically, if you leave that up there, uh, Commissioner Gable, the, the plat here that you have winds up being the plat of Lot Fifteen, Poles subdivision, located in government Lot Four of Section Seventeen Township One Sixteen North, Range Fifty-three West. That's in Pelican Township. It is in combination of the southeast lot that's up there, known as Lot Four, and then Lot Thirteen, which is on the west side of that former access road. And in this case, I'm gonna describe this to you to say that what they have done is they have combined those two lots into a single lot now to be known as Lot Fifteen, which dedicates an easement along the actual path of the roadway now, instead of, uh, a random location that does not have a road on it. Uh, naturally, over time, when you've got a radius, especially at a goofy angle like that, um, naturally it's gonna work its way back, uh, to the easier part of the turn. That's what happened. And so they're just moving the road on paper to where the road actually exists.
Now, do the lots, Lot Four and Lot Thirteen, do they disappear?
Lot Four and Thirteen become Lot Fifteen. Combined. Exactly, yeah.
Their numbers are just scrapped.
Yeah, they just erase, erase those numbers and combine them into a new lot and that's what happens. The only thing that's left from a legal description, I described this to the planning commission, this is kind of a nuts and bolts thing, having, having approved of the vacation a right-of-way, the only one that really becomes a bit of an issue is the neighbor to the north. Should that person ever ask to build something over the former right-of-way, we would have to have that person replat. It should not be an issue because that would be within the setback area, but if that does happen, we would run into that. But that's why, that's why, um, Mr. Jensted has gone through this work, uh, because there's obviously going to be permits that are gonna be involving that area, so he knows he's gotta take care of that. And also, so we can dedicate that easement, so. Lot of arm-waving to this one, but I think we finally got there.
Sounds good. Any more questions? We do have a motion in a second for approval on this. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Commissioner McLean is now back online. I have him on the phone here. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Commissioner.
Move on to item number nine. This is the monthly report. We'll get emergency management.
Good morning.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Well, since the last, uh, update, uh, we closed out our end-of-year stuff with the L E M P G. I mean. There's no, there's no audio today. But, uh, um, Clark was able to conduct, uh, their simulated emergency tests, so it's basically a drill where they used, uh, equipment to simulate a down-repeater. General maintenance stuff. Uh, so one thing that was, uh, that was really, I think, beneficial over the last month, um, Prairie Lakes reached out to me, said that they had a bunch of cots from COVID, um, that the Department of Health provided to them. Uh, they didn't really have any use for them. They were seeing, you know, if, if I had a home for them, uh-huh. And like I reached back and asked, you know, like what if, uh, we distributed them to some of our smaller communities in case they needed to stand up a shelter? So Joyce got, uh, approval from D O H, um, to use them for that. Uh, they, they asked that we give some to, to Clark County as well. So I took twenty-five to Clark, um, and then distributed some to, um, Henry and others to Wallace. Still waiting to hear back from Florence on how many they, I mean, I would have ten for them. Um, but South Shore and Waverly, gonna get, uh, like twelve and eight to them respectively, and I don't know, um, should be good. So, so each of those communities at least have, have a few spaces for, for people if, if they need them. Um, other than that, uh, I mean, National Weather Service released a twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six winter outlook, so current guidance, uh, suggests weak and short-duration La Niña pattern. Uh, typical impacts favor slightly below-average temperatures from the Pacific Northwest into the Northern Plains, and then, uh, local forecast center data indicates seventy-seven percent of the time, a weak La Niña will result in colder-than-normal temperatures in our area. And then wetter-than-average conditions are also favored in the Northern Plains, uh, but local forecast center, um, shows precipitation odds are split between above and below normal, you know, in weak La Niña years. So, so we might get a little bit more, um, but we're not anticipating, you know, a ton more. I mean, this is, of course, very long-term outlook stuff, um, but like it's, it's some of the information that I've been sharing with some of the, um, command staff for E O C in case, you know, flood comes up and then in addition, you know, sharing, you know, where, where lake levels are and so forth. I am a lot, feeling a lot more comfortable now than I was a month ago, so. Yeah, I guess pending your questions on any of that. All right. I think next we have, uh, cold water immersion suits.
We'll go ahead and move down. Is Sheriff gonna be here today?
No, he's.
Um, item number ten, discussion possible action to approve purchase of two cold water immersion suits for search and rescue.
Um, at the, I mean, we've identified that a couple of the cold water, water immersion suits that we have, um, have, have leaks in them. Uh, it just happens over time, especially like some of the, the fabric around the boots. Um, this would be, uh, to authorize, uh, I guess up to two thousand five hundred dollars, uh, for the purchase of, of two suits to replace, uh, ones that will be phased out. Uh, we have over twenty thousand dollars in the supply budget for search and rescue currently.
Take motion. Motion by Johnson, second by Gable. Any further discussion?
So it's up to two thousand five hundred?
Per suit?
No, total.
Total, right, yeah.
And so it's just coming out of a supply line?
Yeah.
It's the search and rescue budget.
Correct.
Yeah. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Andrew. No sheriff's report today. Move on to number eleven, discussion possible action to approve purchase of a pressure washer for the highway department. There is information in your packet in reference to that. Good morning, y'all.
And, yeah.
As Troy stated, this is just a request to go ahead and purchase a new hot water pressure washer. Our current one that we have had for the last thirty-seven years has served us well, but it's leased, it's, excuse me, it's reached its life expectancy. It can be repaired, but would have to be engineered to retrofit it because of the age is not a one-to-one fitment. So in order to get the new coil replaced, that would cost us roughly about eighteen hundred and fifty-four dollars. And again, that would be just to engineer this and there's no guarantee that it's going to serve us for another thirty-seven years. On the other hand, we can purchase a new unit and they would give us a trade-in of our current, uh, unit for one thousand fifty dollars. Uh, price for the new one starting would be six thousand eight hundred and forty dollars with the deduction of the trade-in. They would charge us, uh, five thousand seven hundred and ninety dollars. So because of, again, the age of the old one, I would request that we purchase a new one for that five thousand seven hundred and ninety dollars.
Is this something you have in the budget?
Uh, it's not budgeted for, but we do have money in our equipment account and this piece of equipment gets used quite extensively for degreasing, uh, thawing in the wintertime and for our distributor when we're degreasing or taking the road tire off of it.
Motion by Johnson, second by Gable. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
I can remember different time. That was a motion.
It's probably out of order here, but, but I mentioned before I said that the doors look good.
Yes.
How's the project going?
They are pouring cement today, as a matter of fact. They got all the rebar and everything in yesterday, so they're gonna, they've already started before sunup already pouring. And they're going to hopefully get the sand trap and oil trap tidying yet today too, so.
Good. So they have the doors on the building?
No.
Oh, okay.
Uh, we, because of the addition of the two doors, we're still waiting on those.
Yeah.
So they still have to frame them up. They got them cut in and everything. They got the concrete, uh, ready for everything.
But the two doors, right?
Two doors additional. Yes, we're waiting on those.
But the others are, yeah?
No, nothing is in yet.
I was by there on Sunday. It was wide open.
Correct, yes, no.
I thought, I thought there was doors on it.
No, no, not yet. They, uh, just cut off the concrete. Wishful thinking, yes. No, I agree.
Okay, thanks, Ryan.
Thank you again.
All right, let's, uh, move on to item number twelve. This is action to declare printer surplus to be destroyed in the treasurer's office.
Okay, Carol listed the printer as a Laserjet Pro M four oh two N printer. It was purchased back in May of twenty eighteen. She said it's given up the ghost, so obviously it's not working. She would like it to declare surplus to be destroyed.
Question by Gable, second by Schwer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Item number thirteen, discussion possible action to approve the MS three sixty-five from annual renewal to monthly renewal.
Okay.
This is Microsoft.
Yes. Uh, right now, we have a, um, renewal with Microsoft. The state has recommended that counties and cities switch over to the secure S D emails, which would be a dot gov. Uh, they are funding it for, uh, a time. It just depends on how much funding there is per year and year, possibly more. It depends on that whole funding aspect. Right now, currently, our renewal amount is twelve thousand two hundred and forty-six dollars. So, so I should back up. We need to switch to monthly because if we do an annual renewal and we pay that, whenever this goes into place, which is, um, forecasted to be early next year, it's, it's a process to get this switched over. We would not be refunded the difference from that month till the end of renewal. So we would lose those funds. So what we need to do now for us to be able to do this is switch over to a monthly renewal. So whenever we are able to switch over, we can just, um, prioritize with, uh, Microsoft.
So we wouldn't start, start interrupting, Mr. Sheriff. So we wouldn't be paying for two basically at the same time?
Right. Yeah. Otherwise, we would be, we'd stay the annual. So, um, the cost then is twelve thousand two forty-six. When I did that by twelve months, the, the monthly amount, of course, you get a break. When you do an annual renewal, it's a thousand twenty fifty. Um, right now, to go to the monthly renewal would be one thousand two hundred and thirty-eight dollars and forty cents. So the difference in that per month is two hundred and seventeen ninety. But keep in mind that we would lose all of the, um, annual renewal amount whenever this. this would get switched over if we don't switch to monthly.
So they don't, basically, they don't prorate your annual benefits on?
No, you would actually would not be refunded anything.
So can I add, Mr. Sheriff, so, so with this, so, I'm sure with the auditors on top of this, because it's, um, when we switch those .gov emails, we get some free licensing from the state, that's what we're waiting for. So that's, in that, that timeline, to get all that approval figured out, is what we're trying to cover most economically, so.
By then, submitting applications and discovery sort of paperwork and all kinds of things to get it switched over, it's just a process.
Does anybody really understand this, Microsoft 365?
It's just more, it's just more secure, uh, you know, coders understand it, it's more secure protocol and all that stuff.
Okay. That goes more secure, there's more fair recommending, the state's recommending that we switch over.
So that means we'll, we'll be switching over emails and, and to from .org to .govs.
Good stuff.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Also move.
Motion by Gable, second.
Second it.
Second by Schwer. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Brenda needs a new computer.
I do.
Number 14, action to approve purchase of a computer for the auditor's office.
So we can purchase, like I said, up to $2,000, which the computer that I would like to switch to is $2,128.85. And, um, the reason is, I'm out of memory. I've had it blacked out to me twice so far, so. And I, this should have been replaced last year, actually, and I've just been trying to, but a long time is good, so. Trying to save mine as long as I can.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Gable, second. I'll move. Johnson, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. All right, let's. Action to approve the abatement applications.
No abatements.
Claims for payment?
Yes, we have several of those. The first one, we will lose salary claims. Uh, the total amount for the October salary is $809,771.54.
So move.
Motion by Gable, second by Schwer. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Andrew, let's go next, next group, by the way.
Oh, it's, um, no.
Oh, oh, it wasn't here, oh, okay. Didn't want you to think you got applied or something, nevermind.
Um, so, Andrew, am I okay to do this one? Okay, so we have claims. Uh, the first two is, um, S E P A A, that is for insurance on the new vehicles and the freight liner, two for the Sheriff's Office, one, the freight liner for the Highway Department, um, in the amount of $1,011.42. And, um, then Tom's, Tom's Reuters, that's just our normal monthly. And with 347.96, so that total is $1,0359.38. Um, Todd Case had emailed me yesterday about submitting an additional claim for, Andrew, you want to explain this, the generator over in Cranmsford.
So, yeah, what he sent over was the sub recipient management costs for the Cranmsford generator project. It's basically administrative costs. Um, part of it was, uh, 672 first district for their administrative costs, and then the remaining $807.40 to, so, Sioux Rural, uh, Water System for their administrative costs. I talked to one of the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program managers at the state today, um, after, yeah, um, but she, she said typically, they will submit everything to the state, the state gives us money, and then we would pass it through to them.
So it's a reverse of what?
So we don't need to pay it until we get the money from the state.
Okay. Well, you ought to talk to Todd. Okay, so, with that, then we will just stick with the $1,0359.38, that other claim that you have there, then we'll just disregard that for now.
Motion by Johnson.
Second.
Second by Gable. Any further discussion?
Just a quick comment, so.
For the, the total amount as well?
$1,0359.38.
So the one for the Thompson Reuters, that's, is that the digital one, the library?
Yes.
So we're not going to leave that one at the end of the year, by the way. Can I just hit on, just as an aside item, so we can have a discussion about the legal, the public law library, which is the legal requirement. It's funded with law library funds, so these aren't county funds. That particular thing, it's, it's done through collecting, uh, you know, fees, legal fees from, from defendants, I think. And, uh, so the, so the judge, that, that, it gets used very little. It's, uh, the public library was good enough to let us use, one of the terminals, put that subscription on there, but it gets used so little, we still have law books in the courthouse that the public can use if they want to, but it's just, doesn't seem to be, you know, worth, worth the juice, so, so it's better just to let that one last. So at the end of the year, that, that, that goes away. Yeah, that'll go away, so.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
And we do have our monthly 911 fees, uh, surcharge fees, in the amount of $38,895.93. This is for the month of August, and this will be, um, sent over to the City of Watertown.
Commissioners, I will be sustaining from this role.
Hope to prove.
Motion by Johnson. Second by Gable. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
No budget supplements.
No budget supplements?
No personnel.
No personnel changes? Travel requests?
Yeah, three of those. Uh, government buildings, emergency management, two people from government buildings to attend a conference. And this is budgeted, there'll be four individuals going, but one of them, it, it get a break on, if you have three people that go, so we will have four attending, but the one doesn't need to have a travel request, so.
Motion to approve. Second it.
Motion by Gable, second by Schwer.
Also, this is very helpful for individuals to attend these safety conferences, so that's how, um, we also get credit on our insurance.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
This call is no longer being recorded.
You're not recording the call anymore. Thank you. All right, uh, all in, and we voted, we did?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, motion carries. Thank you. Public notices, uh, number 20, possible quantum commissioners could be in attendance at, we have the Lincoln Day Dinner coming up on November 7th. It's going to be at Second Street Station at 5:30, and I'll be there for that.
I'll be there.
Um, 5:30, 6:30 is dinner. Sioux Valley Commissioners Association Meeting is on November 12th at 12 noon in Madison, and then we have the Farm Business Banquet on November 20th at the Watertown Event Center at 6 p.m. Anybody have anything else? I guess I'll just, this is more for new business, but I'll be in Sioux Falls tomorrow for a meeting, Law Enforcement Standards and Training Commission, Representative County Association. Anything for old business commissioners?
Just, uh, Mr. Sheriff just worked it through, um, the jail, so just to give folks, I know, I think Commissioner Johnson's been on there, but it's, um, it's progressing along, so the, the footings for what's called Area B, so that's that area between the, the North Housing Unit and the Sheriff's Office, kind of that, where all the, all the guts are, where the booking, you know, the jail processes take place. Um, so the footings are pretty much poured for that, the exterior footings, and then starting to pour the bases of the walls, and then moving to some of the interior footing. So it's, uh, interesting to watch, so.
I did a lot of visit with Mitch the other day, had a good visit with him.
Yeah, yeah.
I said, I said I'd come out to watch you raise some walls, and he said, well, come about the first of the year.
Yeah, yeah.
And you're in progress, so.
Oh, yeah, I've been working.
Again, I mean, this is, this is at the point where you want to get all the soil, the soil conditions, you know, around those footings, um, right, so. I'm not a construction guy, so if I'm speaking in kind of, using the wrong terminology, forgive me.
Thanks for the update. Commissioners, anything for new business? New business?
Um, I think, Mr. Sheriff, just, on new business, um, I attended a meeting yesterday with Sarah Faust and, um, Angie Cullen, and, um, we talked, we touched on the idea of opioid, you know, community-wide, how to, how to, um, make use of opioid funding that might be available. So we have some in the county and the city that get directly allocated, those ones, it's the opioid settlement. And over the course of many years, we're going to get payments from opioid settlement from the various, various lawsuits that took place, that, the class action lawsuits that took place there, and it's going to counties and cities and the state, so, so pieces of that are city money, that's not, we're not, you know, I think the city has something like $90,000, we have something like $80,000 there, and trying to look at it as a community.
You've given $70,000 since 2020.
Yeah, so, and then, but we have more, you know, we can expect to get more allocations over, over the next, uh, like, 18 years, it's, it's quite a few years. But also, there's state, state funding we can apply for grants for as well, so trying to have a, a common picture, because a lot of those things, it basically is dealing with, um, you know, helping people deal with substance abuse issues, and the, the, you know, criminal activity, you know, the criminal justice-related problems that, um, take place because of that. And so, um, to reduce recidivism and all those things, um, that go along with that, so trying to take that as a approach as a community. So I thought it was a good initiative on, on part of Sarah and Angie to, to pull it together, so we'll, we'll see what, um, comes of it. So, um, we may be looking at kind of semi-formalizing that committee with, you know, with, you know, city and county and other, some of the other organizations around town, so.
Is that, are those dollars, uh, allocate, allocated, or do we have to apply for them at all?
Well, the, the county and the city ones, we, we don't, you know, it's counties and states, you can, you can just spend those, the state level, but the state has a farm front available, so.
Those are over and above.
Yeah, so then we have, we have to, so if we can do a community grant, it's going to be a stronger argument than doing, say, a county or a city grant, so that, that kind of approach. Um, and it must be, it has to be spent on things that are related to, you know, dealing with substance abuse.
Well, we just, uh, awarded some to HSA.
Yeah, well, that's, so, yeah, so, yeah, HSA's, so we have made it HSA, so, yeah, they're obviously involved in that. And then the, you know, the sheriff, I think you mentioned, you know, when we're talking about the jail, there's, there's, there's equipment that you can monitor people's violent signs with.